Call to order the May thirteenth, twenty twenty four, regular meeting of the East Bethel, Minnesota City Council. Can you please join us in the pledge of allegiance?
The United States of America, included for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and infinite in justice.
Hurry there, Bob.
Here we now.
Jumping right on it.
I'll make a motion to adopt tonight's agenda. Motion's made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None heard. First item on the agenda is presentations and public hearings. And Ms. Suzanne Urkel is going to give a presentation on the Anoka County Blaine Airport Advisory Commission, of which she is the chair, last time I knew. Hi Suzanne.
Hi, everybody. Yeah, I am a community member of the Anoka City Blaine Airport Advisory Commission, and we meet twice a year for official meetings and twice to plan and organize those official meetings. And I am a co-chair. I am a community member, co-chair, and there is a user co-chair. But as you will see in the slides, the user co-chair is vacant right now. So if you are a user out there, you can apply. So, the first slide, that's a typical agenda that we go by. It's a very formal meeting, just like this. We have minutes and we vote. Next slide. Next slide. We have a public comment. That's where members who, users, members, and the public, anybody can come to these meetings. They're public, they're open to the public. They just do like, it's not a big area. It's not even as big as this room. So they would like RSVP. So if you have a comment or inquiry or anything about the Anoka Blaine Airport, I urge people to go, if you're curious, especially after what you see some of the things that they do here. Next slide. That's, we had the nominations last time. There is no user co-chair anymore right now. So I am, I am it. We did a bylaws update. Next slide.
A user would be an active pilot who uses that airport.
A user is a pilot or a tenant who rents, they don't all have pilots. Some of them rent those little hangars for business use. So, and most of that area is businesses flying in and out. We do have several East Bethel residents who are members, which is, I guess, one of the reasons why we're active in it. But our taxes go to it too. So, all right, next slide, next slide, next. We have a airport user spotlight. So every meeting, one of the users goes in and briefs the whole commission on how the airport impacts their business, their life. And this user is University Avenue Magnet School, actually. They, and I just want, you can just kind of go through the slides quickly. They use the school, the airport and for teaching the kids. The kids get to go out there. They get to, it's all part of their curriculum. They get to see the airplanes. They take some of the stuff they learn there back to the classroom and, I mean, first and second graders draw pictures. Third and fourth graders do a little bit more. They learn about satellites. They learn about communication. They, and then they create, do projects with it. So I'm not really doing this about the school. I'm doing this because East Bethel has so many home schools that this is open to, and I want them to know about it. We have magnet schools. We have private schools. We have churches with youth groups. And they, they're all welcome to not just show up. They have to make an appointment and they're all welcome to go. And the users volunteer their time and their airplanes and they let the kids go on there. We also have the Young Eagles program out there. And this gentleman, Michael, I can't say his last name, he would love to come and talk and show what his, the whole Young Eagles program does. So I'm going to pass his contact information over to you because I tried to schedule it, but being a third person trying to schedule between an administrator and two busy people, it just wasn't working for me. All right. So, keep going. That's if you want the school. The noise complaints. Noise complaints are a big thing there and we always have, you can see Minnesota up there. There's not that many compared to the southern United States. But, and there's macnoms.com, which is a flight tracker. I see a lot of questions on Nextdoor and other places about, why is that airplane flying so low? You can go to macnoms.com and get actual, click on, it's live and you can click on the plane and it tells exactly what that plane is doing, where it came from. So your questions are answered that way. And, oh, and the complaints, this is, shows the complaints and the, it's all the data for the different types of complaints. But complaints, they log complaints and inquiries all into one batch. So they don't separate it up. And they, there's also a website, mspmac.org. That's the commission airport website that covers all the airports. Flying Cloud, St. Cloud, all the small airports, even MSP. So that's all I have. Does anybody have any questions?
I just wondered, I was, I attended one of the meetings because for a time I was, I joined you to go to the meetings one time.
Right.
And I know Brian is, I wondered if, did they ever do the handoff on the communication? Were you notified of this meeting? You're supposed to be on the airport, Blaine Airport Commission. Am I right or is that Gink correct?
I, I would have to look, but I haven't had any notifications of anything.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm the pointed. He's the alternate. He should be getting the emails, but it would be up to the city to provide Jennifer Lewis with his email and Matt Look should be getting the emails.
Because when I got the notice, I knew I was no longer on it, but I was no longer on that as an alternate, but I should have double checked at that time. So sorry about that.
Okay.
No problem.
Yeah, if we can get that email situation corrected.
Yeah.
And they are online too. They are via meetup or.
It really is a neat little airport.
Yeah, it's a very neat airport and they provide a lot of services and they have community events. I did see out there that somebody asked about a airshow coming up next weekend and I looked all over those. I saw nothing. So I'm. Okay, it's not through this. All right. Thank you. All right. Any more questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Suzanne. Next item on the agenda is the assessor request for proposals presentations. I think that's you, huh?
So you know if there's any other ones. Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Alex Guggenberger. I am the Anoka County Assessor. You guys have seen me for several years here at your local boards of appeal and equalization. Tonight I want to walk through a little bit of what, about what we proposed for assessment services contract that you guys had asked for. I'll kind of just, I don't have a specific presentation. I'm going to kind of cover what was outlined in there, give you a little bit more detail, and then answer any questions that you guys have regarding that proposal. On the main page that talks about firm history and experience, I just wanted to kind of outline how Anoka County operates compared to some of the other counties. Anoka County is somewhat unique, kind of like Hennepin County. Ramsey County is what's called a full county system. So their county assessor's office does every city. There's no option to have a local assessor. Hennepin and Anoka are slightly different in that we have local assessors within our county as well as some city assessors in our county. Ultimately, the county assessor's office is responsible at the end of the day for what that number is. Who goes about picking up the data that leads to that number? That's, that's kind of what the local assessor versus county assessor does. In this county, we are responsible for eleven out of the twenty-one jurisdictions we have contracts with. So we are doing those, that day-to-day work. You guys would be the twelfth if you guys choose, choose our proposal. That accounts for about eighty-two thousand parcels. We have sixteen thousand, or sorry, sixteen appraisal staff in office. That includes myself. That includes Ben Hamill here in the office. Ben is our assessment compliance coordinator. So he's the one that does all the sales ratio analysis at the end of the year based on the data that our appraisers collect, the sales that they verify. He's the one who's doing that statistical analysis to move values up and down at any given year. Getting to some of the qualifications and proposal details. I know East Bethel has been locally assessed for many, many years. I think since two thousand and one, I think is what you'd said at the local board meeting.
Do you know why that is?
Do I know why?
Do you know the history of that? Because at one point it was county.
At one point it was county. I believe it was.
Around two thousand and one or two.
Yeah, my guess is it was cost driven. If I, you know, if I had to guess. I was going to ask Diana Stelmach, who's been employed at the county for forty some years. But she's been in and out on medical leave. So I haven't had a chance to connect with her about that. But I believe it was cost related at that point in time. So with, and that's, you know, our proposal right now is very similar to kind of what you guys were paying in prior years. That was something that the county board, when Mr. Look was on there, kind of made a conscious decision to make our rates more competitive so that we weren't losing contracts necessarily and in hopes that it was going to increase some of the equalization across the county.
Did that actually make more work for you if there was a local assessor and you had to coordinate with that person?
It's a little, it's a little bit different because they're not my staff person. So there's only, and that's kind of why I included that table on there about the county assessor versus local assessor functions. There are certain things that statutorily the county's responsible to do, homesteading. And then there are certain things that I, as county assessor, can dictate to local assessors as far as what they do. If they're going to verify sales or not, that's something that we've chosen in this county to make the local assessors verify those sales. It just makes it that much easier to do their job on any given day because if customers are calling asking about their values, they know which properties have sold. If they haven't verified any sales, they're not going to know that information. So there's certain things we do, certain things that the local assessors do. And that is outlined again on that, on that table there. In general, when you're, when you have a local assessor, they're the ones physically doing the quintile in any given year. That statute requires at a minimum, once every five years, that we physically inspect every property. And it is very much a garbage in, garbage out approach. If the data we have on file for your parcel is not accurate, the model that's using to generate the, to generate your value is not going to create, generate a very accurate value. So consistency is key. And if you have an inconsistency there, you end up with certain people paying more than their fair share at the end of the day when it comes to property taxes. And that goes for between East Bethel and Columbus and Linwood versus just residents within the city of East Bethel. You know, it all impacts different tax lines on their statement. So. Kind of talked about the importance of good data. What I propose in the contract, you'll see, is a modified three-year contract. The reason we do that is right now the contract is set to end in December. That's kind of an odd timeframe for assessors. Our assessment date is January second every single year. But we don't get, we don't finalize that process. We send out value notices in March and tax statements and, value notice and tax statements in April, March, or in March timeframe. And then you, property owners can appeal that value. By ending in December, we will essentially work to wrap up the East Bethel assessment and then we will answer questions for the work that we didn't, we didn't do. That's kind of why I proposed ending the contract when I did, which is end of April. That allows us in two thousand and twenty-seven, I believe, to answer the questions for the work that we did.
It's more like your fiscal cycle instead of ours.
Yes. And it's a little easier for property owners. It's kind of hard when they call and say, well, hey, you were out at my property last year. And you have to tell them, well, it wasn't me. It was someone else. I'd be happy to come take a look again. It just inconveniences property owners. I mean, they kind of get frustrated. So that's kind of why it's a modified contract.
Oh, makes sense.
We've kind of, we changed that with the most recent renewal for all of our contracts. We moved that date out just to make life a little bit easier. And then part of the proposal as well is, I want to make sure this process, if chosen, is as smooth as possible for East Bethel residents. I want to make sure that, change is hard, no matter what you're doing. I want to make sure that all the new constructions picked up later this year, we've already made some internal changes. A lot of the sales that are taking place are going to be verified by my staff. Again, that's something that we have control to make the decision on, but it just makes life a lot easier. Even in the event you guys didn't go with the county office, we would then be able to inform and help a new local assessor coming in to say, here are the sales that took place with Ken not being here. So we're looking at some of the sales. We're recommending in this fall too, to work with city staff to get a copy of the permit information. And then we'll work with Ken. If he needs help picking up some of that new construction, or he wants us to help in any way possible, we'll make ourselves available to do that. But that won't be included as part of the billing stuff. I just want to make sure that that transition is a good one, long-term.
Going with the county, what does that do with the appeals process?
A little, it's the same. Instead of Ken, standing up and giving you a presentation in the spring, it'll be me. Your local board will run exactly the same. We will answer questions. We track some of the phone calls a little differently so we can tell you how many phone calls we had, how many parcels we changed before the board. Other than that, it'll look very similar. You guys, that meeting is your meeting each year. So you guys have the choice to choose whether you want a local board meeting or an open book process. So some of our cities in this county do open book, which means they don't have the meeting that you guys are having in each year. That gives your residents a deadline when you have a local board meeting. So if your residents miss that deadline, they are no, they don't have any more appeal options or informal appeal options. Their only option after that is tax court. We have other cities like the city of Ramsey, they're open book. So they have, their residents have the opportunity to appeal with our office up until the day of county board. So in this year, residents could come in June seventeenth and appeal their value directly to the county board of appeal. There is no local board process. So it's the residents that live in those cities that are open book, they have a longer appeal process time. So it's really how each, each city wants to operate.
Who did, I'll see. Who determines that? Because I don't, I've never been aware of it. And I was involved on the city council in two thousand and ten to two thousand and fifteen. Never heard anything about an open book.
Yep, I was aware. When I started in two thousand and twelve, I believe you were, you were on the council. That's something that's probably, East Bethel's probably done for many, many years. I believe Diana even had indicated that you guys had a local board back when the county had the contract in two thousand and one. So it's something that's up for you guys to discuss. On any given year, you guys can certainly decide to go one way or the other. You can get it back if you make that decision down the road. And I can certainly answer questions about that at a later time too, if you have more questions about what that looks like. Some county or some cities are afraid that if they don't do that, they're, they're not going to get informed about the values or anything like that. But if you guys want to go down that route and you guys still want a meeting each year to at least hear about the values or hear about phone calls and that type of thing, I do a number of those meetings every year for the cities that are open book. The city of Blaine used to have a value meeting where residents couldn't appeal their value, but they're open book now, where I gave a market update about what was happening with the market in that area. And then how many phone calls we were receiving and that type of thing. Do you guys have any questions specifically about the contract? If approved, we would then go through the process of sending a contract. We have a standard contract, but if you guys have terms that you guys want to change, we can negotiate.
I didn't see any kind of inflation factor in there.
Nope. So typically.
Only thing that I saw would be if the number of properties changes, then the total bill would change.
Yep. So since my time at Anoka County and even, even prior to that, our bills have only changed each year based on the parcel counts. That's just kind of how the county's operated in past years. You know, so any given year, if you have a lot of new construction, you'll see that bill. Usually it's anywhere from a half a percent to one and a half percent. Some of the cities have a lot of development, might see one and a half percent. If you have a lot of commercial industrial parcels, it's really, any change in use can, that can happen with. So, but that is typically how all of our contracts have worked.
Is it a three-year contract or is it, I didn't, I haven't seen the contract itself. You opt out if it's not working for us, we can.
Yep. And so that, that's part of the contract that would be, that I would send to the city for review. The contract would have, the standard contract that we use right now allows a six-month, you can notify in writing, six months prior to when you, when you'd like to end services. Some of that has, the length of that time is because likely you guys would have to have, if you guys choose not to go with us.
Well, you work in long leads and legs.
Right. And if you guys don't choose to go the local assessor option, the only statutory option you have is, is the county. So even in an event where your local assessor was incapacitating or something like that, the county would have to step in and do that work. So that six-month time allows a good window for some of that work to take place.
Okay.
Okay?
I've got two questions. In the primary contracts for East Bethel, by request, the city county assessor will also attend any other council meetings, workshops, or other meetings. Is there any additional fees for additional meetings?
Nope. No, I attend a lot of, a lot of meetings in a lot of different cities. But that's at Anoka, you know, really the contract fee that you're paying is actually not even my salary. My position is statutory, statutorily required. So the county is, foots the whole bill for my salary and everything. And that's just a public service. As a public service, that's what we're here to do. So I do show up to any council meeting that I can.
Okay.
Or where I'm requested.
And relay to that, would there be any fees for resident consults where you go to the property and meet with them and?
Nope. No, absolutely not. No. And we do, we do offer some flex scheduling. So our staff work seven to five-thirty. They have the ability to work seven to five-thirty, eight to four-thirty, or seven to three-thirty. And then sometimes they can, they can change that around a little bit. If property owners have a tough time having someone out to their house, you know, after seven-thirty, so they can start their day at someone's house as well. So we do try to work as much as possible. We've had it where people say, I can't meet you until six. And then at some point, you know, we will get someone out there at six o'clock if we need to. So it's not that you're losing flexibility there. We are very flexible in terms of making it work for residents.
Okay. Thank you.
Good questions. The only concern I have with this process is when I'm supposed to make a choice, I like to have a choice. And the lack of responses to the request for proposals mean we don't, at this point, we don't have a choice. Why is there no interest in, in people proposing to do this work? I'm surprised.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know if schools aren't turning them out or what the numbers are out there, but I think, I think, you know, in this particular case, Ken was retiring. So.
There, there is a shortage of assessors, just in general. It's an aging profession, for sure. But the one thing too, with regards to East Bethel, it's a rather large contract too. So if people have individual contracts, East Bethel is a large enough city with a large, enough sales, enough parcels to keep one person busy full, you know, almost full time, or, or full time if it's just one person working. That alone, if you have an existing contract, gets hard to split your duties between the different contracts. So that can sometimes be a factor that local assessors are looking at. I'm saying that just because we work with a number of local assessors with, throughout our jurisdictions. And that's something they're always very cognizant of is, if I pick up this contract, do I have capacity in my daily work to service the contract where it needs to be serviced?
Yeah. I was just surprised by that. Don't want me to interrupt anymore?
No, no. So that's, that's pretty much all I have for the contract. If you guys have any questions, I know in the, I did include in the proposal, I will likely, or I will be your guys' primary contact for the initial term of this contract if you guys choose to go with us. For city and county staff, I know I've been emailing Aaron quite a bit here about different topics. But if you guys have any questions, by all means you can reach out to me. At some point then, based on staffing, we will assign an official appraiser for the city of Ramsey, or sorry, city of East Bethel. And then just one thing to note too, about the way we do quintile, which is a little different. I did include in the packet a copy of our quintile notice. So we move our staff around to all of our contracted jurisdictions throughout the summer. And ahead of their arrival in a given city, we send a notice. And that notice is, like I said, a copy of it's included in your, in your packet. That gives property owners an awareness that staff will be in the area two to three weeks before arrival. But also gives them the ability to deny access to the assessor. Not everyone likes the assessor. I get that. No, you know, so some people, this gives them the opportunity to deny us access to the property. But it also gives, for my staff's safety as well as for residents' safety, it's been a very well-received move as far as how our county contracts are concerned. It also severely limits the amount of time our staff are in your area. They might be in East Bethel for two to three weeks instead of all summer long. So if you guys have any suggestions or updates to that as we work through that, by all means, let us know. We do tailor that on a year-by-year basis to make sure we're covering all bases. Okay?
Very good.
Do you use the same formula that, say, our current assessor does?
When you say formula, do you mean sales ratio formula? So Ken is using our system, the R-CAMA system, our valuation engine.
Well, just can you briefly, what is that system?
So the system we have is called Enterprise Assessment and Tax. It used to be IAS World. It's a Tyler product. Tyler has a number of different government applications. They're in thirty or forty different counties right now. Each individual system is different and unique. So ours is based on, it's a cost model at its, at its base, but then we adjust it based on sales in any given year. So it's the physical data, your size, your, the grade, the quality of home, if it's two stories, one stories, how many acres you have. All that physical data gets entered into the CAMA system. And so that's what Ken was doing for you guys. He was going out physically collecting all that data and inputting it into our system. He was also verifying all the sales that took place in East Bethel all those years. At the end of the day, we compare the sales price or the assessed value that we, the system's currently generating based on that physical data to the sale price. That ratio tells us whether or not values need to go up or down. And that's really where, if you have inaccurate data going into that system, the values going up and down is kind of inconsistent. So the, through this, the life of this contract, we would see every parcel in the city of East Bethel over a three-year period, not a five-year period. That just ensures that.
Oh, you would?
Yep. So we, so part of this contract is not us seeing, you know, two thirds, you know, two thirds of your, of your city. We're going to see everything over that three-year, initial three-year period. Then if you guys chose to renew, we would move to a five-year cycle. That just makes sure that as many people as quickly as possible are being treated the same. So.
How do you know if he actually was out there?
Who? Us or Ken?
Any assessor.
So we take a front-facing photo at every property when we're there for quintile. So you can pull up in our system and look, look up a front-facing photo.
Like Amazon, huh?
Uh, we, so we don't make it public. The front-facing photo, well, if you ask and printed a field card that front-facing photo is, we don't take front-facing photos when there's kids in the pictures or the garage is open or that kind of thing. But we do require a front-facing photo on all those. So that's, that's our indication as to why we're there. And a lot of times people will call and say, I've not, I've lived here for fifteen years and I've never seen an assessor. There's many times we go back and say, well, we were here in two thousand and one, two thousand and six, you know, and so on. It's over the show of pictures. And that, that is our proof as to how we were there.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Do you have any other questions?
Anybody else have any?
Not right now.
So, Mr. Mayor, by way of process, this is not a vote for this evening yet, but I can work with Alex, get a contract together. We can bring it back for the twenty-ninth meeting.
Are you guys well acquainted from your previous time with the county?
Matt signed all the renewals last year, I saw.
Mr. Look, how much time do we have to deal with this? Is it a timely issue or a drop dead date or?
Well, like I said, I think, I think we'd have plenty of time to bring it back by the twenty-ninth.
Okay.
And seeing as there's only one respondent to the RFP, it's, you know, and, and from a financial standpoint, I think it was very comparable to what Ken was charging before. So.
Yep.
So I think it's, you know, probably a good move at this point.
I do have my opinion based on just, just what I've heard, is that it probably is a good idea to keep the local board of appeal and equalization, just so people have a sense that local fellow citizens are reviewing their, you know, situations.
I think people do appreciate that. It really depends on how comfortable each council is with that. Some city councils look at it and go, I'm not into real estate. I do, you know, I do taxes for a living.
Right.
Who am I to say what a property is worth? And they, they don't really want that responsibility. Others do. And they're more aware of what's going on in their communities. And they do want that responsibility and that say and what's happening. Um, and they do want that responsibility and that say in what's happening with values, so. You always have the say too, you guys choose and set when that meeting is, so if you want more time, your property owners to have more time, you can push that date out, you just have to be done by the end of May.
I didn't know that.
So, yep, so we can, yeah, so we can work with Matt, and we, we, we work with all the cities to schedule those meetings, so we can work. And if that's something you guys wanna do and you wanna push that out a little bit further next year, um, if you guys have a reconvene meeting, it just has to close within twenty days. So you, I would recommend twenty days before the end of May, um, but.
Well, having, having dealt with the local board of appeal and equalization and also the county in the past, Ken and I went around on, on things a few times. It, it is, although I was unsuccessful locally and successful at the county level ironically, but it, it was just good to have the local board of appeal and equalization fellow citizens.
Yep.
To, um, present your case to first.
It is different too, because you guys are members of the community, you guys live in.
Yeah.
Live, live in East Bethel, you kinda know what's going on, you know the neighbors. When it gets to the county board, the county board is a, is a special board of appeal and equalization, so it's not the county commissioners that are sitting there, it's real estate experts, it's appraisers, it's brokers. They might not know what's going on in East Bethel, but when it comes to a, a use or a classification type question, not necessarily a value, but is it commercial, is it res? You guys might drive by that property every single day and you have a very good idea of what's going on there. When we're only there for the quintile season.
That's what I'm saying.
So it's, it is, it does give you guys a little bit more, you guys have more credibility there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, from a community standpoint.
At least for starters, if we feel it's unnecessary, we or subsequent city council can change it.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. Um, would you guys like me to come on May twenty-ninth at all and answer questions if you have any?
Sure.
Matt's call, what do you think?
It's up to you, uh, it, it'd probably be good, because let's say, read the contract, they may have questions or wanna modify something.
Absolutely, I'll be here.
Maybe get some of those comments ahead of time and work with you.
Sure.
There may be a couple of leftovers.
Yep, yep, I'll be here.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Look forward to seeing you. So that brings us to item five of the agenda, which is the public forum. And, uh, three people have signed up, looks like. And first one is Dave Kiefer, do I pronounce your name correctly? Okay. Come on up to the mic, state your name, address, and.
My name is Dave Kiefer, and I live at one nine zero five six Jackson Street.
Yes, sir.
East Bethel here, and we have a neighbor, and I know you've received complaints about him before, that have chickens. And they've got five acres, and I think they have at least four roosters. And two or three of these roosters are non-stop, I mean, they, they grow from three o'clock in the morning till probably eight, ten, twelve at night, just depends on, you know, when they were fed last or whatever, but it's a, it's never-ending. It's just, we can't sleep with our windows open because these things are growing non-stop, and it's got at least four roosters. And they, uh, my, my property backs right up to their property, and they let these chickens run loose from time to time, not all the time. But they're, they're on my property back there, and they're, they're a nuisance. They're, I mean, the noise, i- i- and I've, I've spoken with a bunch of neighbors up and down Jackson Street and also on a hundred and ninety-second there. And it is, every one of them have the same complaint, they, they can't even sleep with their windows open now.
I didn't even know roosters were legal in East Bethel.
I don't know, that's why I'm here, I'm, I'm here to ask. You know, I mean, even if you're, even if you're raising chickens for egg consumption, you don't need a rooster. If you're, if you're, if they're.
Unless you want blood eggs.
Right, and, and if you're raising them to mass-produce chickens, then you only need one rooster. You don't need four or five or however many they have, or I don't know exactly how many they have.
Have you spoken to these neighbors?
I have not, I have not, I don't speak Spanish.
Oh.
And.
Aaron, aren't there stipulations? I mean, I understand, we said you could have chickens, but there, there is nuisance.
I thought there was a limit on the roosters though.
I thought you could only have one.
So herein lies the, the ordinance change that was enacted, and we need to go back and maybe tweak the ordinance to ensure that, uh, these types of scenarios can be enforced. Now, uh, after the ordinance change, uh, which essentially lightened the quantity of allowable chickens, um, to properties larger than an acre and a half, uh, we, we lost some ability to do some enforcement, um, for situations similar to this. So although a, a rooster is allowed on a, a, a lot larger than an acre and a half, there's no limitation written into the number of roosters. There's no limitation written into the number of chickens. So we may want to go back and take a look.
I'd have sworn that, 'cause I remember you saying something about the roosters, the fact that people think they crow at dawn, they grow all the time.
Yeah, I, I was against, I was against allowing roosters into that ordinance.
Yeah.
Yeah, these are not, they're, they're day and night.
Oh, yeah, that's the way they are.
What's, what's your address again?
It's one nine zero five six Jackson Street, northeast.
But that doesn't eliminate the nuisance ordinance.
The address I'm speaking of is seven one six, I think it's a hundred and ninety-second lane? Avenue, a hundred and ninety-second avenue.
Am I correct?
Seven one six, a hundred and ninety-second avenue. And they, like I said, it's just, I, I could, I could go down, up and down the block and I could get you a, a, a whole slew of signatures of all the people that are annoyed by this, it's, it's a constant nuisance. And, you know, I don't, I don't have any problem with it.
Anybody else talk to them, I mean?
Uh, I know there's been complaints to the city here, at least, at least two or three other people have complained, uh, other neighbors, and.
Do we have any?
They kinda get, they're kinda getting brushed aside, pushed to the side and saying, uh, we're tired of hearing you complain.
I have a comparable thing over on Coon Lake, it's crows. And the solution I came up with was called shot shells, that you load into a twenty-two rifle.
Yeah, when you got neighbors.
You know how smart those things are?
Oh, I know.
I fired at them one time about four years ago, a couple of rounds, and when I walk out of that house, they still all take off. Four years later, they see me, I don't even have to have the rifle or anything, I didn't hurt them, but I just, I just peppered them with, with.
We're getting back on track here.
I can't shoot, I can't shoot roosters.
So, so, uh, so the, the ordinance revision, uh, there are, there are three things that would apply to today's conversation. Number one is chickens shall not be kept in such a manner as to constitute a public nuisance as defined by the city code of the city of East Bethel. So there's one, however, we need people to be willing to sign a written complaint.
Yeah.
And bring it into city hall before we will do any investigation.
Oh, he said he's got himself and we got two people there.
There's two other neighbors here.
So let me, so let me move on to the next item. I, item N is no more than twelve chickens can be kept on lots smaller than one and a half acres.
Yeah.
So if I have an acre and three-quarters, that seems to me like I can have an infinity number of chickens.
And these people have, I believe it's five acres.
The next item is roosters are prohibited on lots smaller than an acre and a half. That doesn't tell me there's a limit to roosters, just can't have a rooster on an acre and a half. So I think if we, if we want to address situations similar to our complaint, is it Dave?
Dave, yeah.
Dave, is we need to tweak the ordinance revision so that we can make things enforceable. Now unfortunately, the genie's been let out of the bottle here, and these people are allowed to have all of these things. And until those chickens die off or disappear, or someone else moves into that house, we got what we got right now at that property.
There's still a nuisance ordinance.
Yeah, still a nuisance.
So, so, so there's a complaint process, we need those formal complaints to come into city hall before we can investigate.
So that's gonna be necessary stuff.
Yeah, I can do that, I can, I can go door-to-door and get, I can get every one of those neighbors to sign.
We also have a pin, pen or fence ordinance, they should not be running free in the neighborhood. We also have a coop, we also have all of these things that should be in effect, but without a formal complaint.
Oh, there you go, guys.
We need, uh, we need to take some.
Dave, are you home during the day?
I am, yes.
Do you mind, uh, one of us stopping by?
Nope, not a, not at all, not a problem. Um, yeah, I just, it's, it's, it's such a nuisance.
No, that's intolerable.
It's, you know, 'cause my wife gets up at three in the morning, and they're growing at three in the morning. She gets up for work and starts getting ready and has, and leaves the house by four. Well, then she's going to bed at seven o'clock, 'cause she's gotta get up at three, you know, and these things, you can't sleep with your windows open.
Are those two guys on the same issue?
Yep, yes.
Did you let them come up?
Yep.
Thanks.
You're a lot more patient than I am, I can tell you that.
Well, if they were re- uh, roaming freely in my yard, there wouldn't be no rooster problem. Okay, so my name's Mike Henham, some of you know me, Aaron knows me, we've had issues in the past. So, to be honest, it kinda makes my blood boil to be here. But I'm willing to put that difference aside to try to work with you on this issue, because it is, I, we can't take it anymore.
The chickens you're talking about.
The chickens, the roosters, the chickens don't make noises, they run free, but the roosters are going non-stop.
Yeah, that's.
And it's just, we can't take it, and my house is right next door to them. And I can hear these things all day and all night with my windows closed. I have to have a TV on and a fan going to drown the noise out.
How long has this been going on?
Over a year.
You're kidding?
No.
Wow, you got way more patience than I got.
Uh, with.
Way more.
Eric.
Like I said, even with the windows closed, if you don't have a fan running, you can hear them.
Wow.
Well, when you leave here tonight, there's forms, complaint forms that are in the thing over there?
Eric here, he can ease on the other side of them, so Eric and I are on the opposite sides of.
Wow.
The, the person that we're having an issue with. So not only that, but they have dogs too that bark non-stop, and they let them run free through the neighborhood, so they're in our yards constantly, they're urinating and doing their business in our yards. They don't take care of it. Apparently they own some Mexican restaurant, so i- in, in Blaine. Okay, so they have a Mexican restaurant, they bring all their trash home, they have garbage bins constantly at the end of their driveway, and they, they never leave the end of the driveway, and they're overflowing with trash, and it blows into our yards, so we're always picking up their garbage. So it's more than one issue than just the roosters.
Well, you might need more than one complaint form then.
We're gonna need a lot, 'cause, yeah, so.
The reason, the reason.
The copier fired up.
Smith there, he's the one that came up with it because there was selective enforcement, accusations, this and that. And we said, okay, so we'll do one, and he had to be a resident of the city, gotta sign it, so, you know, somebody comes up and says, what's going on? It doesn't, it's not public information, but it is legit, and we can say, well, yeah, we do have a complaint, somebody came in here, and then we got somewhere to stand.
So about that, Eric has complained multiple times, he's kinda been the leader of all this, you know, putting this whole deal together to get the neighbors together, because we're all just fed up with it. And he's made multiple, multiple complaints to you guys or to the city, and they told him to stop calling, stop giving us complaints. And, well, he'd have to answer.
Oh, we'll let him come up here.
Okay, when it's his turn, I guess, but, but anyways, they had told him that rather than, you know, continuing to complain, to get the neighbors together and come into the meeting and voice our opinions, so.
That's the whole point of the public forum.
Right, so now you're actually aware of it, but he was told to not, you know, get, get a complaint form written out, so.
I apologize for that, 'cause that should never happen.
No, not at all. Okay, so.
Then I can do that, I can get some signatures from the neighbors and go around and just, and bring them in. That's not a problem.
Good idea.
So.
Well, we got one more.
Yeah, Eric.
Well, yeah, yeah.
For the record, Aaron, I'm still waiting on those public records that I requested over a year ago, thanks.
Mike, what was your last name?
Hello, guys.
Hi.
Um, I just wanted to support everything that these two neighbors have said.
Could you say your name and stuff?
My name is Eric Jankey, and I live right next door to these neighbors that we're speaking about.
Yep.
And last year, twice, you guys came to my house, and I had made these complaints.
These guys being the people who own the chickens?
No, no, you, the city council.
Oh.
Came to my house, I, I forget the guy's name, and.
Should be the same bunch of people.
Yeah, and they, they, they took pictures, and I'm not kidding you, the weeds are this tall in their front yard. And this is a manicured yard for forty years. They park all their cars, there's three families living in this house. They park cars all over the yard, they have trash, trailers, junk, uh, restaurant equipment, just, it, it looks horrible. And you guys made them cut their yard, they did it once last year, one time. It's been beautifully manicured for forty years, they party every night, and they play this loud music in the driveway. We've had the cops there multiple times, Mike's gone there multiple times. They had a fire in the backyard, 'cause they moved the, the car in the backyard because they were making too much noise, and the car caught on fire, 'cause they got it stuck. Um, as far as these roosters go, it, I guarantee you, if any one of you had these roosters go for one day, you would go insane.
Oh.
It's been over a year, and I've tried to communicate with them, they do not speak English. They're not there, they're at work all day, and they neglect their dogs, they neglect their horse. And if you took a drone and flew it over their pasture, you would see that they don't take care of the horse defecation, they don't, you know, uh, what is it, recycle it, compound, compost it.
Yeah.
And the horse can't even walk because there's so much defecation, and it smells like ammonia in a sewer pit in my backyard, because there's so much animal waste in such a small area. I can't even go under my porch and have a barbecue, 'cause they got loud music, and it, it, it's just so upside down that this whole community is here complaining, and I've been doing it for a year, and you guys told me to do all this stuff, I did it, you came out, took pictures, and now you're telling me to go get, you know, signatures again, I mean, this is just going round and round, so we gotta do our job.
Well, who?
What?
Who?
The new people that I dealt with.
Well, it's only five of us, and it's the same five in a free year.
Records, you can look in the records, I forget the name, I'm sorry.
Well, no, I mean, I.
But the situation is intolerable.
Was it city staff, was it a man, a woman?
Everybody here probably has a dog, right?
Nope.
Well, a lot of people do.
Mm-hmm.
And it's fine, you can have a motorcycle, you can have a dog, but it can't have no muffler on it, and the dog can't bark all night. Because people have jobs, they have babies, different shifts.
I say it all the time, the basic property owner's right is quiet enjoyment.
It's called common courtesy. It, we all live in America.
Yeah.
It's common courtesy.
Everybody has property rights, not just one person.
If the law is here, you know, they need to be adjusted, they need to be adjusted tomorrow. I don't want another year go by and come in here and bitch again.
But we don't, the five people that sit up here, uh, we don't know everything that goes on. And if, if people don't come in here and say, this is what happened, this is what had happened, this is the person that I talked to, who do we go back to and say, what are you doing?
Records from last year when I came in here and made the complaints and filled out the forms, it's all on paperwork.
I'd be more than happy to address, uh, this, so.
This isn't the first time I've been here, sir.
We, we did invest community developments, the, the building official, uh, the code enforcement officer, we, we responded to his complaint. They, the homeowners were requested to clean up. Um, they were required to remove a building, they were required to get a variance, they were required to get an interim use permit for a horse, uh, we made them do a lot of things in order to get into compliance.
Okay.
At the time.
But they, they have since.
So since then, the, the chicken ordinance has changed, and I can verify that if someone were to call and complain and say the neighbors have a dozen chickens, what we're gonna do is, how many acres do they have? This ordinance change, this ordinance right here permits them to have more than twelve, it permits them to have fifty. And there's no limit in this ordinance, unfortunately, if they have more than an acre and a half of property. I don't know how we enforce that. However, on Monday morning, after the weekend's been loud, city staff aren't gonna be able to go and listen to a noise violation that happened twenty-four hours before. The sheriff's office would need to be called, so they can go verify that there's a noise complaint, a concert, a, a truck in the backyard on fire, or.
What I'm hearing is it's not a weekend deal, it's every night.
And, and, and I have four recordings on my phone of these roosters, it's not. A- and, and I have four recordings on my phone of these roosters, it's not very loud, cause I just did it off my deck, but no, I have proof, I mean, I don't need proof, I got all my neighbors' proof.
Have the, have the police ever show it up, sure?
Yes, yes, sir, and I've called them.
Have you ever asked them for, you can get a report.
No, I didn't think, I, I thought that by calling the authorities and quell it, and it would stop this. No, it's just, it's in consideration on every level.
Mr. Mayor.
On just the noise ordinance alone, this should be dealt with, not the amount of chickens, not the amount of roosters, just the decibel sound, it should be split done.
Mr. Mayor, I, I don't think anyone doesn't believe you here this evening, I think we definitely believe you, so if you let us hit reset on this, um, there's some newer people here, uh, than were a year ago, so we can definitely look into this and make sure that's addressed.
Like, what kind of timeline you think we can realistically look at before you can contact these people in their language, because I don't speak Spanish.
Well, we'll need to find a translator certainly for this, but, um, but I, the sheriff's department may have somebody too that can assist in this, but we, it's as, it's as easy as starting with a letter and getting them informed.
Thank you.
And, um, that doesn't mean compliance.
No, no, but, well, you.
So, you take the next steps and follow through, so.
Will you address it immediately?
Yes.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And if the council wishes to relook at the chicken ordinance, a simple majority of you can make a decision here to address.
I swear, I, I'm not being truculent about this, but I swear we dealt with that rooster issue, I, I.
So, the, the ordinance that's on the book right now was amended March twenty-seventh of twenty twenty-three, so the words that are there are what was amended in March of last year.
I'd like to take another look at it. Yeah, we gotta control the roosters, that's, that's the whole point of bringing it up.
For example, with all the dogs running around your house, you know, constantly, you'd say, that's ridiculous, if you have a motorcycle.
Even if you have a five-eater lot like they do, you know, they can have all the chickens in the world, they don't bother us, and they're not noisy, you know, they.
No, it's the roosters.
It's, but, they've got, they've got.
And it's the trash, and it's stuff like that.
And the, the ammonia, and I thought that they're.
Well, that's a health hazard.
I thought that they're just.
You know, people don't get rid of animal waste just for, cause they got nothing else to do, it's a health hazard.
Mayor, uh, council, we've, we're, our, our public forum's gotten off the, the record. Um, I, I think what we have here is, uh, clearly, we have residents here that, uh, have some reasonable legitimate complaints in order to essentially have staff engage in the court enforcement actions of, of letter oversight and so forth. Requests have been made to formally, you know, put that together in a complaint and so forth, so that then staff can do the appropriate enforcement actions, which has been promised. I've also heard that a revisiting of the city ordinance with respect to nuisance, um, and various, uh, livestock, such as roosters and so forth, may be in order for like maybe a work session. And, and then process these from there, um, and I think that's where we're at.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, that, the public forum is closed, um, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda, I would like to pull item C as in cat. I'll second it. Now, somebody else has got something they want to pull?
Yeah, I wanna pull A, please.
A, you said?
Yes.
Was there a second to the, um?
Yeah, I didn't.
Okay. So, in addition to, I'm A and C and also K. Jim, you got anything?
H and I.
H and I. Well, we got a, a motion and a second to approve what's left of the consent agenda, all those in favor, say aye. All aye. Posed, none heard, K. Mr. Miller, do you wanna speak to A?
Yeah, I'm curious here on, um, what are we doing with the Rum River Tree and Nursery in our parks, do you know where those are going? I'm on the Parks Committee, and I, I have no idea what this is.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Miller, uh, you're referring to the three trees that were purchased from Rum River?
Yes.
Uh, those are three diseased trees that were taken out near the fire department and were replaced.
And there was one other in here.
On the street maintenance, my, I might believe that all the different charges in here are for different streetlights. When it comes to electric utilities, it goes one right after another here.
Yeah, we went through that once, yeah.
Why are some of them five hundred and a hundred, and some of them are five? That's just a question.
Try and find them here, if we wanna move on to the next one, come back to that.
That's all I have under A.
Who else besides me had A, did you?
Oh, no.
I got C.
You were C. My, my question on the bills to be paid was adding up all the different allocations of Metro Inet, or, uh, I don't know, how would you describe the internet service provider or whatever, for the city. Uh, allocated by, by department, if you add them all up, it's seventy-six, seventy-three hundred dollars, uh, on this bunch of bills, and if you annualize it, it's probably about eighty-five, eighty-six thousand dollars a year, does that sound like it's correct? Or is this a three-month bill that I'm looking, bills that I'm looking at here, or?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, those bills are approved by Mike, um, and I know no one cheaper than Mike, I'm catching that.
Oh, I don't know, I give him a run for his money.
But I mean that in the best way possible.
But, but anyway, I, one of the things that bugs me is people who position themselves in businesses to be sole source suppliers to government entities, it's an old game that a lot of people play. And they get in there, and then they're, they're there forever, and it's a, it's a, it's a non-compete agreement, basically, and I just wondered, cause, cause I have issues with Metro Inet, you know, they block all these different emails and all that and put them into quarantine, and then other things blow right through. Like somebody pays them to allow their emails through, and they're unsolicited, and they're, and they're people who are soliciting business, so it's kind of, it's, I, it's, they're, the way their system operates is curious to me. Because they, they block a lot of stuff that's supposedly hazardous or whatever, but other people blow right through, and it's, you know, can we do this for you or that for you, and you need our service or our product, and I'm curious about why that happens. Maybe we should talk to Metro Inet about what their, their, uh, algorithms or methodology is, because I can't follow it myself, I really can't follow it.
Good idea.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I get the same thing in the quarantine, and if you, and if you review it, there's usually a thousand email addresses on it, and so it, it's goes directly into phishing at that point, you know?
Yeah.
So they flag it, um.
But that's the, that's the strange thing, but then the other guy over here is completely unsolicited, it blows right through the, this firewall.
Yeah.
And it's, it's kind of an odd, odd thing, but my question was about the cost, whether this is, is it on the scale of better part of a hundred thousand dollars a year?
Yeah, we, we budget, we budget for it, and then we divide it out per, uh, department.
Yeah, I know, but is that, is, am I miss, missing something, or is it about eighty-five, ninety grand a year?
No, it would be per the contract, yeah.
Well, is that what the contract provides?
I can get you a copy of the contract.
Well, just, just to answer the question is fine, I don't, I don't need to read the contract.
Yeah, I, I do not know the exact dollar amount of the contract, um, but we can certainly reach the.
Yeah, if you could let me know if, if that's the case, I'd appreciate it.
And then.
And I, and I would like to know why some service and product suppliers blow right through this supposed invulnerable firewall. Am I the only person experiencing this? Okay, well, it just seems odd, if you got this, you know, this wall of Xerxes built up, and then Joe Blow sells this product or service, blows right through it, and it's kinda weird. I would like to, I would like to know why that is, and maybe Mike knows, he's probably the most IT sharp person in the place, isn't he?
Well, Will, Will will probably have a, a better answer for that, um.
Yeah.
Office is out of here.
So that would be the two questions that I was concerned about, otherwise.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any question on item A?
I will respond here to the, um, Canexus Energy, just kinda going through some of these, you're looking at the fire station lights, uh, parks, recycling center, you're looking at the sirens, one through fifteen, streetlights, uh, pumps, I mean, there's a litany of, of different bills that would, um, some would use more electricity than others, but it's based on a kilowatt hour.
Yeah.
Speaking about the sirens, just not a long conversation, but now are those bills gonna go up along with the fact that we have to pay for new sirens?
Uh, Mr. Mayor and Council, we're not paying for new sirens, um, the county is updating their, uh, weather warning systems, which requires a board change, uh, with, uh, with the control panel, so in order to receive that signal from the county, we have to replace the board, the board is a thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars, um, with install included, unless you need a bucket truck to install it, which, um. Most of them can be replaced with a simple ladder, so there's, that's included in the price, um, we, we have till twenty twenty-five to do that, we are budgeted for it.
Okay.
Uh, so we were aware of this coming, uh, everybody upgrades everything and nothing works with anything, you know, so nothing dovetails nice.
Can I interject something right here, Aaron, before those gentlemen leave, could you give them the forms?
I did, that's what I handed, I handed them a whole, the stack that we had.
Oh, did you? Okay. Thank you, thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
At any rate, the sirens are, the hardware from that standpoint is not being replaced, just the.
All right, uh, I, I misread it then, because I thought we were gonna get.
It's about a fifteen thousand dollar impact.
Okay.
Okay, well, if we're, we've discussed all of it on item A, can we, uh, get a motion to approve item A, or I'll make the motion to approve item A.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve item A of the consent agenda, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All aye. Posed, none heard, okay. Brian, you wanted to pull item C.
Item C on page eighty-five of the packet, uh, lines twenty-two and twenty-three, the, this is on the topic of the variance for the Septic and Front Street. And I did vote in the negative to this, uh, in the minutes, it says all in favor, motion passes unanimously, it should be four to one.
Okay, good catch, okay.
So, let's see, anybody else has any other changes?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
On, uh. Page eighty, line three, it says that I said, Louis stated either way he had to go, I don't recall ever saying any such thing, and it doesn't make any sense, so I would like that stricken. That's page eighty, line three, the beginning of that paragraph, strike, Louis stated either way he had to go, I don't know where they, I don't know where they.
Yeah, it doesn't make much sense, there's nothing.
I don't know where they got that from, I don't know, and that's, that's my issue.
Mayor, I believe that means that the next sentence actually should start, Louis stated this was a different counsel, otherwise the he is not clear.
Okay, well, we can, in that case, the second sentence in that same paragraph, change it from he to Louis, that would be the other change.
Anything else? I'll make a motion to approve item C.
I'll second it, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, posed, none heard. Jim Smith, Councilmember Smith wanted to pull item H.
H and I.
Yep.
They're in the same order, I just got a question, it's like, it says they, the vendors fill out a license application, what kind of application do we have for cannaboid edibles? I didn't think we had anything that I know. Our state don't even have any rules yet, out of curiosity.
We can certainly copy you on that, um, Carrie, who is the person that handles this, is out on vacation right now, but we can get you a copy of whatever documentation she's provided.
Is this THC or CBD?
Um, Mayor, uh, Councilmember Smith, um, maybe I can help you out, is, uh, this has to do with the cannabinoids, the edibles, and this was before cannabis was, uh, uh, made lawful through state legislation that was passed last year. Prior to that, what you had was, um, uh, THC, um, you know, whether it be, uh, liquid beverages and so forth, or, you know, gummies and, and stuff, and, and, and the city of East Bethel had permitted that, but had a licensing aspect, that you had to just, uh, put in an application to indicate that this was retail, that you were gonna be selling these particular, uh, goods. And I s- I presumed, looking at this, that that's what these applications are, cause it had to refer to, uh, uh, those cannaboid project.
And that was THC, not, not CBD, but THC.
Yeah.
That gets you high.
But I think the.
Right, it was low level.
I didn't know that.
I think we changed it to follow the tobacco licenses, so the, the form was similar to the cigarette form for tobacco.
Okay, yeah, I think I do remember that now.
Yeah.
That's right, okay, I'll make a motion to approve H and I.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, none heard.
Thanks, Eric.
And I pulled, uh, K, and I have, just have one simple question, what is CHOPS?
CHOP, CHOPS is the marching band, they're, they're one of the marching bands that comes out, I don't think they've necessarily been out this last one, but they've been out numerous years before, they're, uh, like a professional marching band that raises, is a fundraiser, and they take and they will donate those funds back throughout the communities.
Oh, okay, I've never heard of them before.
Yeah, they're, they're a marching band outfit.
Well, thank you for the clarification, uh, with that, I'll move that we approve item K of the consent agenda.
I'll second.
May, motion made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed, none heard. Okay, so that's our consent agenda, brings us to agenda item seven, which is new business, seven A, Planning Commission, variance request for twenty-one, three, 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 Durant Street, Northeast, driveway paving standards.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're up, Aaron.
Members of the council, um, on March fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, the city of East Bethel received a variance application from Mariah Magness, the property owner of two, one, three, 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 Durant Street, Northeast, to obtain a variance to the paving standards, as required in section ten subdivision fifteen B two of the driveway access standards. A building permit for the construction of a new home on the applicant's property was issued in October of twenty twenty-three, and a certificate of occupancy was issued on February of twenty twenty-four. Durant Street, Northeast is also Anoka County Road fifteen, which. Durant Street Northeast is also Anoka County Road fifteen, which requires the applicant's right-of-way access permit to be applied for and issued by the Anoka County Highway Department. Due to wetland impacts on the property, the driveway and access required Anoka County Board of Soil and Water as well as city engineering approval. The access location, driveway base elevations, and fill material required a city grading plan that is included as number five in your attachment in your packet. Uh, section ten, uh, general development regulations subdivision fifteen of the driveway access standards, uh, those are attached, uh, as item number four for you. Uh, the, the applicant, uh, noted that Durant Street is also Anoka County Road fifteen, and therefore the applicant's right-of-way access was issued by the Anoka County Highway Department. Joel McPherson, the Anoka County engineer, was contacted in an effort to determine what the county's requirements are. McPherson indicated that Anoka County does not have the paving requirement, however, individual city ordinances can require improvements that have, and have, these have been applied throughout the county. So I made an inventory of East Bethel's neighboring cities or townships to determine how each jurisdiction applies their ordinances to county highways or roads that run through their jurisdictions. Uh, as you can see, Andover has a paving requirement, uh, from the edge of the roadway to the property line in their rural designated areas. The city of Columbus, uh, has a requirement if the, um, road surface is paved, the driveway is required to be paved up to the property line.
Excuse me, Eric, or Aaron, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So when you say to the property line, you're basically saying it has to be paved in the right-of-way?
Yes, the right-of, the, the right-of-way, whether it's the county right-of-way or the city right-of-way is required to be paved.
Until it hits the property line.
Yeah, which is typically by definition called the apron of a driveway.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Ham Lake has a requirement of thirty feet, uh, from the, uh, public street. Uh, Linwood Township follows Anoka County's regulations, they are a township. Oak Grove, um, has a minimum of the apron. And Saint Francis has a minimum of fifty feet in their rural, uh, service divisions or districts. Uh, to hear a request for variances from the literal provisions of the ordinance in instances where strict enforcement would cause practical difficulties because of circumstances unique to the individual property under consideration, and to grant such variances only when it's demonstrated that such actions will be in keeping with the spirit and intent of the ordinance. To consider, the consideration of a variance requires the consideration of a three-factor test for practical difficulty. Economic considerations alone do not constitute a practical difficulty. The first factor is a test of reasonableness, which means the landowner would likely use the property in a practical way, but cannot do so under the rules of the ordinance. It does not mean that the land cannot be put to any reasonable use whatsoever without the variance. In this case, paving, as required by our ordinance, would, would not deny the landowner reasonable use of their property. The second factor is that the landowner's problem is due to circumstances unique to the property and not caused by the landowner themselves. The uniqueness generally relates to physical characteristics of a particular piece of property, that is, to the land and not the personal characteristics or preferences of the landowner. In this case, the property, although partially classified as a FEMA floodplain with multiple county ditches running through the parcel, it is not more unique than many of the other properties in the area. The third factor is that the variance would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. This factor is used to consider whether the resulting structure would be out of scale, out of place, or otherwise inconsistent with surrounding properties. In this case, uh, there are forty-seven parcels with driveways to Durant Street between Wild Rice Drive on the south and two twenty-ninth Avenue, uh, northeast on the north end, of which thirty-one of these driveways are not paved. Paving requirements for driveways in all residential zoning districts has been in east, has been in the East Bethel City Code since two thousand and eight. An alteration was made in two thousand and ten at the request of the city council to delay the paving requirement by one year for all new construction, as well as limiting the paving to those, uh, areas, uh, or accesses to driveways adjoining a paved right-of-way. The city cannot enforce, uh, ex post facto laws or ordinances, meaning the city cannot go back and obligate a property of, owner of a parcel with a driveway constructed prior to two thousand and eight to meet current driveway paving standards. Uh, on four twenty-three of twenty-four, the planning commission met and held a public hearing. After discussion and hearing from the applicant's husband, the planning commission, by a six to zero vote, recommends that the city council deny the variance request to the paving standards as required in section ten subdivision fifteen B two of the driveway access standards. City council should review the application, the planning commission's recommendation, and approve or deny the variance request to the paving standard as required in city ordinance.
I was surprised by that vote of the planning commission. I was, I, I expect at least, at least it to be a split decision. And I did get a call the next morning, or an email the next morning from Sharon, who is the chair of the planning commission at this time. Uh, and then we talked on the phone and wondering about where she called me, whichever it was, didn't matter. And we talked about an ordinance amendment because it seemed, and not just in this particular case, but in general, it seems excessively long, given what the neighbor community, neighboring communities do, and it's arbitrary to begin with. It's not, I mean, you know, there's no, no logical quantitative reason why it has to be seventy-five feet instead of thirty or forty or whatever, you know? It's kind of arbitrary. So, Tim, do you have, do you have some particular thoughts about this, or does somebody else want to take the lead on it?
Yeah, I do, I, I think we've got a few, few things going on here. Our, our own permit for application on driveways on city roads clearly states driveways located on an improved street and road require abidmiss or concrete driveway. If you look up the definition of an improved road, improved road is a road with a curb, gutters, which has a surface of concrete or asphalt. Our own ordinance basically is telling this, these people that if you look at the road it's on, it's not what it's classified as, we're classifying it as something that it's, it's being classified not as. The other problem is, is that your own email, Aaron, says it states in all residential zoning districts, driveways located on an improved street require abidmiss or concrete driveway extending from the street seventy-five feet to the garage apron, whichever is less. Uh, I can see this as a problem because in this case, the county also gives out, or has a form that says driveway access for all county roads, correct? Right, they have something like that?
The, the right-of.
The county?
The right-of-way access permit comes from the county.
What does it also say, it says driveway, does it not?
It's driveway slash access.
Okay, uh, you can see where the confusion can be for someone putting something like this in. The pictures itself show, uh, that you included in this, that even with all the construction going on and all the traffic, that they're not dragging a lot of things out on the road. We've got, what'd you say, how many were paved there? Out of the forty-seven?
I think there's eleven that are not, or eleven that are paved, if you do the math, I believe.
So that would fall into that third factor, that it would not alter the essential character of what's going on out there. I feel, and I think, uh, that we need to take a hard look at our own form, and I think I mentioned this before, that we get our terms correct for our residents so they know what we're dealing with. The second half of our own form says, basically, in residential districts where it is an unimproved street, definition of an unimproved street, according to, uh, the Minnesota guide that I looked up, said it's a dirt road maintained for traffic, that's it. And we have to have, the same thing goes into effect there also?
No, our ordinance, if you live, if you live, uh, on an unimproved street, you don't have to pave, you match the surface, so whatever your street looks like, whatever your street is made out of. It's not, it does not have to be improved if you're, according to our ordinance, and I, I didn't write the ordinance, I'm just interpreting what it says.
Well, thank, thank you for that, because that goes to clarify that the definitions are correct, and based on definitions alone, our form needs to be changed to the proper.
And, and I'm not, and I wouldn't argue with you, Councilman Miller, but the ordinance is the ordinance and the form is a form. The ordinance is what is the law, the form may need to be corrected, but that is not the law, the ordinance is the law, so I'm more than happy to look at that.
This is what we give our residents, correct? So it needs to be correct, correct?
They would not, this, in this scenario, on a county road or a county highway, they would not be filling out in a East Bethel access form. They'd be filling out the county's access.
And the county approved this? They have a sign from the county to prove that.
The county approved the access, that's correct.
Now, we sent them something after the fact saying that they need to do this, correct?
Uh, this is part of the approval process for their home to be, uh, given a certificate of occupancy as a building requirement for occupancy of a residence.
From the city.
From the city.
So the county approves it, but the city comes in and.
So your driveway is okay, but you can't occupy your house. That's a, that's a good deal.
And again, I, I didn't, I didn't write any of these, so I, I'm just trying to enforce what we have, what we have on the books.
They're just trying to notice the inconsistencies, that's all.
And see, that, and that's the problem, okay? When our residents do something, I mean, I, we need to stand behind our residents when we do this stuff. We can't hit them and nickel and dime them along the way.
It just needs to be consistent.
Correct.
That's all, yeah.
Uh, I got, I got one question here, quick. The building, when they came in and got the building permit for the house, where they informed that, oh, by the way, you, when you put your driveway in, the county has got one set of rules, but East Bethel says you have to do this.
Um, when someone would come in for an application, especially if it's on a, a green lot, I'll say, one that hasn't, doesn't have any building.
Yep.
Okay, and our staff, myself, determines that it's on a county road or a county highway.
Okay.
They're immediately referred to the county for right-of-way access. The city can't give them permission to cross the county's right-of-way.
Oh, I, yeah, I, I get that part.
So, so then they're routed in that direction to actually gain access to the property. Once they get beyond the county's right-of-way, now they're in the city's jurisdiction. With, in terms of driveway, uh, depth of, of material, width, uh, turnaround for a fire truck.
Standards.
This, the, the lot, the driveway standards, once they go beyond the county's right-of-way permit.
But see, my, my problem, well, one of them with this, is our building, this has happened in a couple of different scenarios, where either something wasn't told to the residents, or something was told that wasn't correct, and then the residents were supposed to eat it or change what they were doing. See, to me, whoever reviewed their plans knew that it was a wetland. And they knew the place was gonna be off, they knew it was a county road, so they direct them to the county and say, okay, you need the county to get you access here. But at the same time, then, you should have said, oh, yeah, but East Bethel has this ordinance that you, if you live on an improved road, that you have to have X amount of driveway that's finished. And if they don't know that to begin with, then what are they supposed to do? I mean, am I making sense here, or what? And, and that just goes with, maybe there's a lot of things that need to be cleared up in, in some of these things, and I also got a email from Sharon on the planning commission saying, look, we need to get our groups together here because we do this and then you guys do that. Well, I said, yeah, but our stuff is based on, you know, we, we have to take what the ordinance says, what was the ordinance created for? Has there been a problem on that road with there are people leaving all kinds of dirt and mush and whatever? Personally, I drive a bike, I would not have a concern about running into slippery stuff, and I did drive out there Sunday and I took some pictures. So if you saw somebody out there, it was me, but I just, I mean, that's, that's a long runway.
I, I can address probably where the ordinance change came from.
Okay.
As the state continues to change standards for stormwater runoff, cities continue to be obligated to change their ordinances to match what the state is forcing cities to do. Now, in some jurisdictions, gravel that's not supposed to be on a paved surface is considered stormwater pollution or stormwater runoff when the rain comes and washes the gravel into the ditch, into the, into the flow of storm water. For instance, Saint Francis's ordinance is based straight out of the MS four stormwater runoff calculation data that came from the state statute. So my assumption is East Bethel adopted MS four information just like Saint Francis did, whether it's a county road or a city street, it has to do with stormwater runoff.
Well, it's my understanding that state and county statutes or ordinances, they kind of trump everybody. Now, if the city wants to be more restrictive, they can do that, but they can't be more lenient. And it gets me right back to the beginning where then they should, instead of being director of the county, or along with that, they should have been directed by the building official or whoever looked at the plans and said, yeah, but you also have this here where, yeah, I understand the county is telling you this, but East Bethel is telling you this part. And without knowing that, I just, there, I got a problem with it. I mean, I, I, I'm not quite sure what the answer is, but.
I agree with what you're saying, Bob. Like Anoka County, they approved this, so what's their measurement based on, is it center of road thirty-three feet? And then the homeowner is supposed to put in this concrete? Their dimensions?
The, the county's right-of-way change is based on the speed of the road. So if there's a forty-five mile an hour speed limit, they may have a ten-foot right-of-way. If there's a sixty-five mile an hour speed limit, they may have a fifty-foot right-of-way. So every one of them is a little bit different based on these.
So then that road's fifty-five miles an hour?
I don't, I don't know what that road is.
It is, it is fifty-five.
So then the right-of-way is whatever.
Right, that's what I mean, I was trying to figure out. Yeah, if Anoka County approved it, and how far does it go into their driveway?
Let me take a look.
Right now?
Anoka County.
The right-of.
The right-of, the right-of, the right-of way for Anoka County is not hard and fast.
It's thirty-five.
Depends on what they're doing.
Right.
Okay, the matter at hand is the approval or disapproval of a variance. And there's, it seems to me that there's an inconsistency here that's creating the problem. That's what it, that's what, from where I'm sitting, that's what it looks like.
So, so, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like, what we can do is, that the, the new businesses, just as it relates to the variance, if you want to schedule this for a work session, we can come and nail down all the details and, and, you know, craft a change to the ordinance if you'd like.
I'm fine as long as it doesn't delay the homeowner getting a certificate of occupancy just because of this.
He's already got it.
Okay, that's.
And, and they have, and they have one year or two.
So they have a year's term.
So it's not gonna negatively affect them.
You guys, you guys wanna come up and talk?
So it won't negatively affect them if we, okay?
No.
Then based on what you just said, Mr. Look, based on what you just said, I would be in favor of having that on the work meeting agenda for the twenty-ninth.
So I did pull up our application for a new residential construction home, there's an entire section on driveway and driveway standards, what a surface is, um.
Unless I'm mistaken, I think the inconsistencies between what we're requiring and what. Unless I'm mistaken, I think the inconsistencies between what we're requiring and what the county requires. And there shouldn't be any inconsistencies between.
So the one other question that, that we have in front of us then is, they've requested a variance. We have a sixty-day window to respond to the variance. However, they have an escrow established, they have one year from February to pave the driveway. If you decide to make a decision tonight on the variance one way or another, um, and it's, and you choose to deny the variance, they still have until February to get the paving done. If you wanna choose to amend the ordinance to a fifty-foot or a, to the right-of-way or an apron, you can do that. And then between now and February, they can pave whatever the apron needs to be, or however you wanna, however you amend the ordinance. There's many ways to do it, but we have to act on the variance request tonight.
Actually, we have a hundred and twenty days, um, we have sixty plus.
Send them an extension.
There's a sixty-day extension.
Send them an extension if, if we're gonna continue this.
Mayor and council members, if I could be heard, um, because, yeah, we, we can extend it, but this seems to also be said as a, an either-or. You can grant a variance with conditions. So i- 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 it's not no paved driveway or all paved driveway. Um, it's not paved driveway now, uh, or paved driveway, or it could be paved driveway later. Um, so it, that, that's the other thing is, is I see a lot of dynamics going here, on here, which I absolutely agree, I mean, building permit issued, right? Certificate of occupancy, then you find out after the fact, well, wait a minute, you gotta put seventy-five feet. Well, yeah, there, the, it, it just does not seem fair. But at the same time, seventy-five feet of unpaved onto a paved, is that right? I, I don't know the answer to that question. That's why you're in this heat and I'm here. But, uh, I, I, I do see that you have little more options other than just yay or nay right now. Um, or you could do yes with conditions right now. Or you can say, hey, let's, uh, hear from the property owners and let's think about this a little bit more, and then maybe revisit on the twenty-ninth. Uh, albeit, um, Mr. Berg would have to send out a written notice, or we have the property owner here, they could just also indicate that they waive that sixty-day notice, um, and allow for that sixty days. So there's a lot of options here, uh, before us. I do not want to get in the way of the property owner being heard or, or testifying and you hearing, but I just wanted to kind of lay that context a little bit more for you.
I appreciate it.
Well, my first question. Who are you?
So my name is Mariah Vangsness, I'm here with my husband Zach. Um, this whole, uh, we purchased the property back in August of twenty-twenty-two, and we went into the city, talked to Aaron Berg, and I believe Matt Danzel was in Aaron's current position. So Aaron was assisting him with this, and Aaron had appointed us to the Anoka County Highway Department. Went down there, we asked them, what are the requirements on getting this project started? We wanted to build that fall, um, had intentions of, we both sold our houses. We had every intention of having a homestead by March of twenty-twenty-three at the very latest. We were significantly delayed due to a number of factors. I would definitely cite lack of communication as a resident from the city as one of those factors. We were appointed to Anoka County Highway Department, went down there, we were told that we needed a right-of-way access, which we paid for, applied for, and then a driveway, um, standard access per, there's two different permits that you have to apply from, for the city. We were signed off by both of them, from the county, by Drew McPirson. Um, he went out, inspected it, said, yep, this is good to go, we got our final inspection report. As far as we knew, we were, we did not have to come back to the city due to the city application for a permit, application for driveways on city roads, being as it's a county road. So again, that's pretty unclear, being Durant Street is a county road. Um, and it also says in here, is the driveway accessing a city road, yes or no? County road, and then it, under it says, county road driveways must be applied for through Anoka County. That's pretty clear in writing why we went down to Anoka County Highway Department. We were not under the impression we had to deal with anything left of the city of East Bethel other than getting, obtaining the building permits and things like that. But for the driveway, since we were appointed there by the city community directors, that's where we came up with going to the city and got our permits approved, whatever. And so began construction of our driveway, and we were emailed by CC, Aaron Berg, Matt Danzel, uh, Becky Wanswee from the Anoka County Conservation Center, and let us know that if we continue work on our driveway, that we will be issued a cease and desist order, which was a much surprise to us because we were told that we're all good to go as long as we got these permitting. A sign-off permit to a residence is, you're approved, you're good to go, you can continue work. We ordered fill, we ordered culvert, we began construction, and we were completely shut down. We were told by the Anoka County Conservation that we needed to do a wetland delineation survey. They only conduct those surveys from April to October. We were told this at the end of October. So this whole project had started in August, and we were told in October that, never mind, you can't continue work, you need to get this wetland delineation survey. So we waited until April of twenty-twenty-three. We got a survey on the books, had that all done, and they had came back and said, oh, I don't think that the driveway should go there. You guys need to pay for another wetland delineation survey and have this driveway moved. So we did that, we had another wetland delineation survey done. Well, they schedule out two to three months in advance. So they're very busy people during the summer, being as they only do it for a period of six months at a time. So in July, we got this other wetland delineation survey done. And we had to have Aaron Berg, um, Becky Wanswee, our builder, myself, and I believe two other people from, uh, the Minnesota DNR, the Conservation Center, whoever they had brought. And they all, we all went out there and then we approved, we decided that we need to move the driveway yet again to the other side of the, um, the grading, the guardrail, which according to the county is, you can't put a driveway right next to a guardrail. And so we got a special consideration for that accommodation to, because we were impacting the wetlands wherever else we had put it, we could put it there because it wouldn't affect the wetlands, we could put it by the guardrail. That was all approved. So this had all happened in August of last year, I believe. So a year after we brought the property, we finally went through all this trouble, heartache, um, renting because we expected to be able to move into our newly constructed house and was told no multiple times. And so in August, we had got the driveway started, um, and we were told that we had to move and, uh, move the existing driveway that we had started, and that got shut down to the approved, per, location of the driveway.
Who shut that one down?
Um, to my knowledge, I believe Aaron had worked with the Anoka County Conservation District.
So when the Minnesota DNR and the Anoka County Conservation shows up at City Hall, they expect that you will, as the local jurisdiction, enforce their ordinance or their law? Because we are the regulating authority for conservation.
But they'd already been out there in Okated, right?
No, that was the, the first driveway, correct, that you're referring to?
I mean, we're talking three driveways now.
Two.
Well, they did one.
Three different places.
Yeah, we had three different places.
Yep, and the city doesn't control what the requirements are in a wetland? That's done by a technical evaluation panel, the city is just one leg of a three-legged stool, if you will. And our city engineer has a wetland specialist, that is the city's representative, uh, then Anoka County Soil Conservation and the Board of Soil and Water are also the, the other two components. Again, the city's been given the task of regulating state statute.
Yeah, short story, I can tell you that getting a driveway across wetland is almost an act of God nowadays. It's very difficult.
So if the applicant feels like they have no answers, you should be the city who also doesn't have any answers, uh, when you're not getting any in, information from Anoka County Board of Soil and Water or the Minnesota Board of Soil and Water. But yet you're told to go shut a project down because it's in violation.
Sorry, I didn't love you, I just.
No, you're good. Um, it also seems contradictory though, given the form and that we were appointed to by you to go down to the Anoka County Highway Department versus the city of East Bethel providing the information on what to do. How are new residents that are building in the city supposed to know where to even begin with their project? If the city themselves cannot even direct them on how to get a driveway started? The form is extremely unclear. Um, it, this entire experience building the house, we love it, but I would never do it again. It was, um, extremely frustrating being delayed, uh, interest rates have spiked. Um, it's costed, it probably costed us fifteen thousand dollars just to get to the point to even construct the driveway. Um, it's, so in, all in all, being as it's on a wetland, the reason why we applied for the variance is because we are going to have to bring in fill for many years to come. Um, the driveway is right next to a county ditch, it's going to wash in there, it's going to, it's on wetlands. So that's, as material settles, you're gonna have to bring in more material to obtain that, so.
Mr. Mayor, i- if I might, um, just kind of reviewing this, this project, this might be one of the more difficult projects to have someone undertake. But the, the fact that they're experiencing frustration is not uncommon when you're dealing with wetlands, especially in the state of Minnesota. Um, and there are, if you can look at it in terms of three different silos, there's, the county's involved, they have their requirements, the city's involved, we have our requirements, the watershed is involved, and they have requirements that no one knows what they have, but anyways, they have them. And, uh, and they will put you through the wringer, plain and simple. Um, and they will charge you an unbelievable cost to do that. Uh, and that's not counting the two-to-one replacement on the wetland fill, which is extremely expensive. So, um, as I understand, there was possibly another interested party in this property at one point that when they realized the undertaking involved, decided, no thanks, um, so.
Well, it's probably the builder of the adjacent development, right?
Right, so to a certain extent, to a certain extent.
Didn't want to deal with any of that.
The applicant's builder, if they had had experience in wetlands and that, may have been able to provide some coaching in this, but it sounds like maybe that wasn't their forte, not criticizing them or you or anybody, but you went through a learning process that was, shall we all say, very painful.
Expensive and painful, yeah.
That being said, I think from our planning commission, they simply looked at the ordinance, it's cut and dry, they had, they had to deny it. Nothing against you folks or anything else, it's just the way it's written. So my suggestion is, um, that, um, again, as per our, our city attorney, indicating that either we, we deny this, move this on, and then come back to a work session, work through all the details, iron out, do you want an apron, do you want thirty feet, what do you want? Um, and, um, and go from there. I'm sure that, you know, the applicant isn't gonna be moving dirt or paving anything until then. Um, or you can, as the city attorney indicated, approve it tonight, approve the variance tonight based on conditions of some sort, if you wanna make sausage here this evening.
Well, could we do the variance tonight and then do whatever conditions add for the fact?
No, no, you'd have to grant it with conditions. There, there is the other option, and that is, is you don't have to make a decision tonight, you just, uh, uh.
Postpone it, man.
You know, trigger the additional sixty-day review.
My thought is, when you applied for the permit, and our community development director told you about the Anoka County requirements for your driveway, did he mention our city requirements for the driveway?
No.
That's not good, in my opinion. Because I think you might've been able to avoid a lot of this if you knew, this is my opinion of it, if you already knew that the city had different requirements, then you would've at least known of it. But it sounds to me like you were basically blindsided because you didn't get the information, and that shouldn't happen.
I don't wanna say anything in my defense, but I was only a city planner at the time. We also had another community development director who was oversight of the department before I even took the role of community development director.
Was that clean, was that clean?
Right, but we can all make up excuses for that. But we have a resident here that's costed a lot of money out of their pockets because of our lack of information.
Yeah, and, and in the application itself too, for new residential construction, which I have up on the board, there's an entire section on driveway. So I'm, I'm just stating that they had to fill out this application when they submitted for a building permit, and there is a section specifically about the driveway.
Right, but the, the problem is, that deals with the city, but if they were told that the county had to approve it, coming in, I would assume, well, okay, the county, I mean, that must be the one that's gonna do this.
They have trump card, yeah.
I would say that that was our impression too. Yes, this says that, but also going back to the application itself, it says city road. Also, we were appointed to the Anoka County Highway Department, so my point earlier was, I, we didn't think that we had to go back and deal with the city of East Bethel on this driveway.
And, and there is, there is a difference between right-of-access and driveway standard. So the county, on a county road, has to grant right-of-access, which is what that permit was all about. Um, driveway standards is something the city establishes.
Right.
So our driveway could, uh, standard could be, you have to pave the whole thing. Thankfully, that's not the driveway standard because that would be costly in this case. So again, it's, it's a, um, I think a confusion based on kind of understanding how these things play out and work. Uh, but we can certainly look at the form, we can try and word it in such a way that it might trigger future applicants to think, oh, I need this and I need that too, or a checkbox, or however it works. Uh, we can certainly look at that, but, um, but again, it's, um, everyone's operating in silos. We don't really know what the county does as far as their application processes go.
Bottom line for me is this story is sickening. It really is, it's just sickening.
And on this application.
These people who are in their silos pay the price of any of this behavior. And we need to clarify, that, we need to be, have consistency between the city and the county. And our forms or whatever have to be clear so people don't get trapped in these situations. Uh, but just, I mean, it's just sickening to hear that this is what you have to go through to build a home in East Bethel.
How much do you have an escrow right now for this driveway?
Eleven thousand, eight hundred.
So we've got eleven thousand, five hundred still sitting at the table here at the city for you.
Plus an escrow and grading permit, plus I believe that we have another escrow for, we were only issued a temporary certificate of occupancy, so while closing on our construction loan, that you only have one year to find a mortgage, we ran into some problems with only having a temporary certificate of occupancy because mortgages like you to have that certificate of occupancy. We couldn't obtain it, and we had to show proof of escrow receipts. So we have a significant amount of funds tied up in escrow as well.
So our, our ordinance does require that any landscaping be established for one full growing season. If not, then you establish an escrow to cover the landscaping should it not survive the one full growing season. So they have, they have a, they have an escrow for landscaping and they have an escrow for driveway.
Now, the landscaping, are you talking about the landscaping, escaping up by the house?
It is, correct.
I can't, you can't even see the house.
Thank you.
From the road.
Right.
I mean, how the heck are you gonna know?
Again, I, I didn't, I didn't write the ordinance, uh, council, so I'm just asking to enforce what we got, so.
Even if we have on the permit application about the driveway,
Crazy.
Our city building official would have to approve this. So why, I don't understand why you weren't educated by our official.
Approve the permit, you're saying?
Well.
What's that?
Approve the permit.
Right, because he approved it. So why didn't he explain the driveway situation? I can understand your point for the county, but if it's our ordinance for the city, why wouldn't they make the resident aware of that? Our building official should've did that if he approved it. That's my opinion of it, but.
So we were admitted to an email also from our realtor who had offered assistance in helping us try to figure out this whole fiasco that the city of East Bethel and the Anoka County Highway Department messed up. So we got to pay the price of that in turn. Um, this signed off, approved rural residential driveway slash access permit is pretty unclear on that. Um, so there again, we felt that this was a driveway permit to construct a driveway.
I can understand exactly what you're saying because it was approved, you got a certificate of occupancy, and then after the fact, it's like, now you gotta do this, well, that ain't right, in my opinion.
So what are our options, if, if we didn't?
We can approve, we can approve the variance. That's one option, is we can approve the variance.
Right, with what conditions? Right, with what conditions?
Well, we can approve the variance with no conditions.
Well, the, the problem with approving it with conditions right now is just like the chicken ordinance, if we make a mistake on the conditions, we can't go back. But if we deny it, we can sit down in another meeting, flush all that out, and then come back, just like we did with the, the box septic system, revisit the variance and.
The septic system, you voted no, is that what you're talking about?
Yes, the one that we just talked about.
Right, okay.
Yeah, so that way, that gives us most latitude to make the most educated choices that we can.
Mayor and council members though, uh, my recollection is once you deny, then you need to actually have, uh, you, you have to affirmatively agree to revisit.
However, the ordinance changes and it is only the apron. They still have until February to pave to the standard that we have. But the standard could change within that year, I think we would allow them to pave fifty feet or to the end of the, uh, property line or thirty feet, or whatever, whatever the change happens to be.
And with escrow, it could be until next June.
And also.
Well, how, how long are we gonna tie up their money?
What did you say, Bob?
How long are we gonna tie up their money?
Right.
Yeah, based on the circumstance of the loan in this one and what happened. I mean, this variance, I think we need to approve it. I mean, we're advocating for homeowner, homeowner's rights here. We're reaffirming that our commitment to promoting responsible development, and that's on us. That's the stuff we have to clear up, we clear up that after the fact. But right now, we've got a resident who's got eleven five stuck into this, sitting there. They've had to jump through hoops, it's taken way longer and a lot more money. And we need to say enough's enough, at a certain time, we just have to end that and say, listen, there are so many on this road that don't have paved driveways, this should be a one of them.
What do, what is down there? Because it didn't look like dirt to me, I mean, it looked like it was kind of sticking together.
It's all classified compacted roll, just like you see on Klondike.
It's not Millings, it's not Millings, okay.
It's classified, just like you have on Klondike or any gravel road in the area. Or in neighbors' driveways, same thing.
Uh, I guess I, I wouldn't have a problem approving the variance, but if, if it became a problem of a lot of crap winding up out on the road, making for dangerous situations, that there'd be approval, uh, you'd have to clean it up.
Right.
Is there a way to do that, Eric?
You could put a condition that, uh, should the use of the driveway cause, uh, problems with the county road as far as debris and so forth, then, um, then the city could impose a reasonable pavement from the county road on back to the resident as far as the length.
You guys acceptable with that?
And what is the length of your right of way, except for forty feet, seventy-five, fifty?
Well, right now, it's at seventy-five feet, but the council's looking to revisit that and so forth.
So it's just that we could define it as until the property line. We could do that, which would be probably about thirty feet, right, from the center of the road? Sixty, huh?
Sorry, I'm off.
Is to approve the var- approve the variance subject to experience, and if it turns out that a lot of debris is winding up on the road, the ci- the city would reserve the right to impose a requirement that it be paved from the apron be put in to the edge of the property. In other words, just in, in the right of way.
Right, for the first one, fifteen feet or whatever it comes up with.
Whatever it is, I don't know what it is there, is it thirty, is it sixty foot total?
I think it's sixty-six, so it'd be, there, each lane would be thirty-three feet wide, but then the road is twelve and a half and there's a shoulder.
Yeah, so it's gonna work out to be about, it's gonna be less than thirty feet total. But that's only if it becomes a, a hazard, you know?
And that's what other cities around us.
But I, I would really like to, again, I'm just nauseated by this, it makes me angry as hell. I built a home down in North Carolina, I didn't have to deal with a bit of this stuff. And it was on a field with a stream and all kinds of stuff, and it was, didn't have to deal with any of this crap.
If, if you're talking about approximately thirty feet, uh, Ham Lake has thirty feet, you could just have it, that way it's very clear, if the condition is ever triggered.
I think that that would be reasonable, given everything we've been through, that would be definitely.
It gets back to what Tim said, is we actually want people to live in East Bethel. And they're gonna have to build homes to live in, and it's like, if you make it impossible to do it, then.
There was several times we just were about to give.
Oh, I, I can assure you, I bought a, I bought an existing home when I moved here. I would never, based on what I've just heard tonight, I would never, of course, I would never build on a wetland, but, you know, aside from that, I would, I would never want to deal with any of this stuff.
No.
Well, that being said, I, I.
Not a chance, I don't have the patience.
I made a motion that we approve the variance with the stipulation that if a debris becomes a hazard out on the road,
Yeah.
that the city can.
Require a, an apron, a driver, whatever the proper terminology is, to the property line, which would only be probably twenty-five or thirty feet. Forget about this seventy-five foot thing, we'll fix that. This is dumb, this is, this, somebody pulled that out of the air, I don't know where it came from.
So we have the condition that should it become a, uh, hazard, the county road, then, uh, paving approximately twenty-five to thirty feet up to the county road.
And the chances of that ever being an issue are none and zero probably.
Well, well, it depends on how they use the property and drive it.
At least it slopes, a little bit slopes away, things roll downhill, they don't roll uphill, you know?
The slope is a.
I ride motorcycle by there all the time, I, I ride my bike by that, your driveway all the time.
Do you have a second on that?
Second, second.
Okay, so we have a motion made and seconded. Anybody wanna read what we came up with into the record or what?
I was, I just had a question, twenty to thirty feet, or do you wanna just do to the property line? Which is defined in code as the apron, I, I don't know what you.
If that takes care of the problem. I mean, if you go to the property line and you're still winding up with butt, buttload of debris and.
Mister Berg, which one is more certain?
I would say the property.
The property line is gonna be clear, that's the end.
Well, go with the one that's the most clear.
I would say the property line.
I, I.
Which mirrors what other cities around us have done.
Yeah, since you asked the question, that would be my position, is to say the property line. It defines a fixed place.
So, Mister Mayor, the motion would be to approve the variance without paving unless it becomes a nuisance. In which case, the city reserves the right to require the applicant to pave it to the property line.
Yep.
Correct.
Yeah. And it's, yeah, it's, you know, nuisance or public endangerment, however, whatever you wanna phrase it, whatever the proper term is.
Then we'll just make sure that.
Eric knows the right.
I, I like the term nuisance because it has those, uh, public endangerment and other aspects.
Yeah, okay.
So, uh, city administrator look has done a great job.
Okay. Uh, motion is made and seconded to approve the variance subject. All in favor, say aye.
We gotta have discussion.
Uh, I thought we were, just finished an hour of discussion.
Brian might have some input.
Well, Brian's not bashful, did, do you have something you wanna?
Right, I guess not.
Okay, well, there being no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unheard.
Thank you.
Oh, man. You guys are way more patient than I am, I can tell you that. You found the limits of your patience, huh? Thank you for, everybody for weighing in on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See ya.
Speaking of Tim, specifically as far as the council members go. And you helped too, Bob.
Nah, I just sat and listened.
And you did too, Jim. Okay. Wow.
This one should be pretty easy.
That's amazing. Okay, well, next item is item A, A eight, A one. Zoning code amendments, architectural standards.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Members of the council, at the April third, twenty twenty-three council meeting, council members Smith and Miller recommended amendments to various city codes, which are contained within the zoning code. City council directed staff to route the amendments to the planning commission for a public hearing and recommendation. At the April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three meeting, the planning commission discussed these after holding a public hearing. Due to the mixed levels of, of support and limited amount of time to discuss, for discussion of the proposed revision, staff thought it was in the best interest to bring two zoning code amendments back for further discussion and formal recommendation at the May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three planning commission meeting. A formal recommendation on section twenty-four of exterior storage was presented and passed at the June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three council meeting. Section twenty-eight architectural standards had numerous revisions. City staff has compi- had compiled the recommendations for a third draft and presented it on December twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. At that time, it was the council's request to allow council member Miller to review the revisions. Attachment one is being provided to the council for review and discussion at the request of council member Miller.
Little history on this one here. This is a bid to foster economic growth and attract businesses in East Bethel. What we are proposing isn't a real significant change, but it's a change to an existing ordinance. This change will allow current businesses in East Bethel to expand their operations using steel building constructions as outer walls and permit new businesses to build new structures using steel construction in design areas. This initiative aims to make it more affordable for businesses to set up or expand in East Bethel, ultimately creating a business-friendly environment that encourages growth and prosperity. Some of the benefits here, the cost-effectiveness by allowing steel building construction and post-frame, businesses can enjoy significant cost savings compared to traditional brick and mortar construction. Cost-effective option enables businesses to invest more in their operations and growth, leading to an increase in economic activity in East Bethel. Attractive new steel buildings, if you looked at them, I provided a bunch here once before, these steel construction buildings can be designed to be aesthetically pleasing and modern, adding to the overall appeal of East Bethel. This change will allow businesses to create beautiful new structures and enhance the visual appeal of the city and attract more customers or investors. We wanna encourage businesses expanding here. Allowing current businesses to expand using steel constructions and post-frame provides them with an opportunity to grow their operations in East Bethel. This not only promotes local businesses, but also creates more job opportunities for residents, reducing the need for commuting to neighboring cities for work. Competitive advantage by offering businesses the advantage of cost-effective construction options, East Bethel becomes a more attractive location for entrepreneurs, business owners, and this competitive edge will help retain existing businesses while attracting new ones, thereby boosting the local economy and creating a vibrant business community. Support our local economic development by simplifying the building process and reducing costs. The proposed change in the ordinance supports local economic development, and it sends a clear message that East Bethel is open for business and willing to support the growth and success of entrepreneurs within our city. So these proposed changes will allow steel building construction and post-frame in East Bethel, present a unique opportunity to drive economic growth and create jobs. And as you all know, with what's going on in the world today and the financial situation that everyone is in, we're gonna make it more affordable for businesses to establish themselves or even expand. We wanna foster business-friendly environment here that benefits both the local community and the economy at large. This initiative has potential and it could transform East Bethel into a thriving hub for more business and innovation, setting a stage for long-term substantial growth and prosperity. I'd like to think we could embrace this change and unlock its full potential of East Bethel as a premier destination for businesses. What we're talking about here is allowing post-frame construction with painted steel sides. It's simple, it got clouded through the, through the last year, and that's what we're asking to do. And that's what I'm proposing here. Not in our brick and mortar district where we have a lot of our businesses now, but in businesses, uh, up and down the corridor, I know we're thinking about rezoning a few areas, but this is something that I think we should really take a hard, hard look at and, and do for local businesses here. That's basically where it's sitting.
Very well put. We wanna attract businesses in our city. Right now, it's Ham Lake jumps over East Bethel goes to Iceni. I think this is a great change that we can entice business owners to come here.
Man, I didn't say.
You got nothing to say. How about you, Brian?
I got a question on, uh, this B and C. Where it says unadorned pre-stressed upright concrete panels, unfinished concrete block, galvanized or unfinished steel or unfinished aluminum buildings. It did say are not permitted as primary exterior building materials. That is circled and crossed out.
It should be are not permitted, those, those, we want, we want paneled, we want painted steel. We don't want anything that's unfinished. Uh, we went through this and we made a few changes on it, and some of them didn't get corrected and some did. And I'm glad you brought that up because we have them in here and we're just gonna correct them as we go.
Okay, cause I wanna make sure that unfinished concrete block is not permitted.
No, that's, that's not in his use.
Okay, and.
And it would be the same under a few other ones here where we have the are not and are where the not is crossed off.
You wanna speak them into the record then, while we're?
And, uh.
Actually speaking of the mic.
Thought it was.
And pole frame construction that would not be allowed in sewer and water district?
Be not allowed in the brick and mortar district.
Do we have a brick and mortar district defined?
So we had that down by, uh, Nexus, we do not?
We have nothing in the zoning code that says brick and mortar.
But do we have?
Sewer and water district?
We have a.
Musa.
Depending on who you wanna talk to, a musa.
Musa.
But if and as sewer and water expand, the musa would also expand, so you're kind of making a moving target, if you will, but that's.
Well, you could do that, you'd just be, if it moves, it could take a permitted use and turn it into a lawful not conforming, so.
Yeah, it would not be in the musa district.
Okay. So can we have a clean version of this brought forward with all the, with all the changes?
Yeah. Why don't you let me put then to get a clean version back together here, there's a few other things on here. This is the original one, this is the one we approved of a year ago in a work meeting. And we went back to it and pulled it out. The only real change is, is gonna be on under item C.
Item C, there are several Cs.
Well, that's it, item C on all of them would have that. Would say the painted steel with post-frame. And then when you went to any of them on the unadorned pre-stressed upright concrete panels, they are not permitted. I know this says are, it's are not.
Okay, and, and the clean version, we can introduce some language that states that excludes the sewer and water district.
Correct.
Is that something you're gonna draft, Councilman Miller, or is that something you want me to draft?
Well, I might as well finish it up now.
Okay, very good.
I mean, we brought this up here and this is what we needed to find out, make a couple of changes on the fly, sewer district would be one of them.
Just wanna take some notes, if I'm expected to do it, that's all. If I'm not, then I don't need to.
I'm sure I'll see you with this shortly because.
If I'm not, then I don't need to take any notes.
Mister Mayor, do we wanna have this on the twenty-ninth work session as well?
Yeah, I'll be ready.
Or, or during the meeting, cause we're, we're ready for approval once we get things cleaned up, I think that's what you're saying, Brian. Is, before we, before we vote on it, we wanna.
This is an ordinance change, I think you'd have.
It's had a public hearing already.
It's already. Well.
Over a year ago, it's had a public hearing.
If, if we have it on, if we get the clean version, we can put it at the work meeting. If, if we have it on, if we get the clean version, we can put it at the work meeting. If there's any last minute questions, then if there's not, then we can also have it on agenda item for that meeting that night if we would like, so that.
We can change the agenda on the fly.
Yeah.
Without violating a two-week.
Well, we, we won't have to change if we just have it on.
Then that's the way we should do it.
Yeah, if we have it on the agenda for the meeting, for the council meeting, if we elect not to talk about it, then we can strike it.
Yeah, we can delay it, yeah. Okay.
Yep.
That'll work.
Yeah, let's do, let's do that.
Perfect.
Okay.
So.
So, that's it.
So, is this informative only?
Apparently so.
Yeah.
Okay, so we don't need any motion, okay.
So, let's see, looking at our agenda. Are there any staff reports?
Mr. Mayor, I'll just give a quick update here. Some of you have probably received telephone calls now by, uh, from Mr. Strike concerning the.
I met with him this past week.
Work that he's doing here on, um, the fire evaluation. So, if you haven't received an invite yet on an interview, he's putting that together for the stakeholders.
You're next in line, cuz you're deputy mayor, right?
Right.
Uh, we've, we've sent him all the information, he's been able to review that, so he's, he's been definitely digging in and getting a lot of that work done. I wanted also give just an update on the legislative session that the legislation, legislature adjourns on the twentieth. So, they're coming up pretty close here, they have seven days left, uh, and, um, and, uh, we, our bill has been heard in the House and it has not been heard in the Senate. So, we're, I have a, um, suit in the office standing by, I'll look for a, a phone booth to change quick and be down there if, when they call me, uh, to testify on the Senate side. So, uh, we're still in the running on that. Uh, the bad news is on the, um, Tom Emmer earmark, we were not successful in that, our competition was Highway sixty-five, the city of Blaine, we received four million dollars.
Sucked all the oxygen out of the room, yeah.
Yeah, uh, so, um, you know, we're, we're certainly thankful for the opportunity to submit on that, they're aware of our need, and, uh, and we will, we will press them hard for future years here coming up as well, so. Um, that is a, um, as I understand the, um, as there's additional phases that are added to Whispering Aspens area there, the additional water will be necessary, there's enough water capacity there for the homes that are now. Uh, in the event of a fire, that's, uh, kinda where the question comes in. Uh, and so, at some point, short of, as we've talked of, uh, other people's money, uh, the city will have to bear some sort of expense on that, in that area, uh, with the additional phases that are built. So, we certainly wanna continue trying to secure dollars and grants wherever possible, uh, for this, and we'll continue, um, there's some public, uh, uh, funding authority money that's out there, that's usually a repayable loan, but, they generally, in the, in the lower interest rate market, they were not as competitive, but obviously it's higher interest rates now, so they may be competitive as well if we're forced to, uh, to finance that. But at any rate, um, those two things, we're still actively working very hard on and, uh, trying to, trying to come out of it, uh, at least with one, one successful deal here this year, so. I'll keep everyone updated on that. But aside from that, that's my report.
Any council reports? Uh, you and I talked, just, I don't know what, where, there's a terminology for it, I just wanna be able to speak with them for a moment, I forget privilege, point of privilege or something goofy. Robert rules borders term, anyway, uh. We talked about the twenty-ninth for the next council meeting because of Memorial Day weekend.
Yes.
Uh, we talked about the East Bethel bulletin and wanting that to be on a sure schedule. And we also talked about blue ribbon. And, uh, that's also got that in my mind, and I wanna see the, whatever's being agreed to on our behalf, we need to, as a group, not me, but as a group, we need to see what's gonna be agreed to.
Okay. Um, Mr. Mayor, I, from a timing standpoint, I would defer to Aaron on this. If we were to have that at the work session as well, is that gonna allow the applicant enough time, or is that?
Sounds like it's delaying it too much, doesn't it?
Yeah, he's actually waiting to book bands, uh, because of the problem he had last year without obtaining a permit. Any of the bands that he's wanting this year are, is requesting to see the permit in advance, so we're.
Unless I'm mistaken, we're, it's still in a negotiating phase, right? We're kinda negotiating with, with them and.
So, Mr. Mayor, short of an open meeting, uh, what I would recommend is I can send all the council members and yourself a copy of this application. Um, I would ask that you don't speak among yourselves on that, uh, but then send back to me if you have any concerns on that, we'll compile those concerns. And, uh, weave them in if possible to this application and try and get this off as soon as possible.
Yeah, yeah, that sounds like a reasonable approach.
Okay.
Is there anything else, folks?
Yeah. One thing.
What's that?
I know it's a bad idea or subject, but the ice arena.
Ah, yeah.
Mr. Mayor and council, we've received, uh, two applic-, uh, two respondents to the RFP on this. Uh, one is Gibson, and one is an out-of-state, I believe they're in southern United States. Gibson is a twenty-seven to forty percent increase over what they were prior, and the out-of-stater, uh, is about a hundred percent increase. Uh, a third option on the table is a, an option of an expressed interest by one of our Public Works employees, uh, to run this. There's, uh, his daughter, I believe, plays hockey there and has a vested interest in, in, in operating this. The, um, Hockey Association is very interested in, in lining this up so they can start getting their schedules together, um, in the summer here, so that they can be off and running, you know, when hockey season starts. So, um, part of that discussion that we need to have is obviously, there is a belief that staff can, uh, operate it for less. And that, um, right now, the, um, the user fees pay the Gibson contract. And if staff was to operate it, we would pay, the user fees would pay the staff person dedicated to operating that. Uh, and that would be an offset of the general fund, um, in that amount. And, um, and so, there's, there's that decision. Now, what I might recommend is that it be a, call it a short-term option until we find a operator that's suitable. Uh, and that may be difficult, and that short-term may turn into a long-term. But.
Yeah, that is, that is the concern.
An employee of ours will be running that for their wage or whatever.
So, we have an employee right now who does a lot of plowing and that for us, and, um, and the belief is that they can split some time and do this. There is, um, under the old contract, there really was an incentive to sell ice time, and, um, and the belief is that we can sell more ice time than we have. Which would be an increase in, um, in revenue for the facility. And so, um, that would be part of their requirement, obviously, is to sell more ice time or focus on that, and so advertisements and whatever money-making opportunities there are there. Again, I, you know, it, it does increase staff, um, work because we essentially, um, have to, have to be billing, you know, uh, for, for a staff member and that sort of thing. Uh, Nate would have more responsibility at that point, there may be some financial impact there. And, um, but it is the belief that, that the, um, customer service maybe under the prior contract wasn't necessarily there. And there were a lot of complaints being generated. Don't wanna speak ill of them, just what I've, what I've understood. So, I think, um, bringing it in-house, we'd have maybe a little more customer service-oriented, uh, than, um, than what was prior there, so. Anyways, that's an update on.
Well, have we sent out any, um, inquiries to the school district, to the Hockey Association, to? I mean, I, I received some email and a lot of bad social media out of this, um.
You didn't get any compared to me.
Couple, you know, I mean, a couple of the people just took everything off because it was found that it was a bunch of crap, anyway.
Yeah.
Uh, there were people saying, well, why don't you reach out and talk to the parents, why don't you reach out and talk to the association? Reach out and talk to other people, and I think that's something we should look at.
Mr. Mayor and council, aside from you, the, you know, your job of sitting up here and looking good, um, I think that you have.
Too late for that.
I think you have a fiduciary responsibility to make sure that every single dollar that you ask from the residents is spent appropriately.
Oh, absolutely.
Contrary to what was represented, I never, ever said that I didn't believe such a business should exist in East Bethel, that was an outright lie. And I'll, and I'm not gonna name names because I'm aware of the law, and, uh, they're not worth my money defending myself, which I could easily do. But, uh, I, I, I do not see the sense in a municipal corporation operating a for-profit business. What should be a for-profit business, I mean, it's not, running, running break-even businesses is a misnomer. I don't think the Mundels run a break-even construction company, do you? I mean, it doesn't make any sense, you know? So, uh, I, I'm adamant about that, I think it's, I, I, I can't believe that we cannot find somebody who can see a business opportunity in that place at the right price. And that they would operate it with the proper incentives being to expand it for their own sake, cuz they'll make more money doing it. And we rent the facility to them, I never said close it down, I never said any of all that nonsense. My point was that the incentives are out of line. With a, with a municipal corporation, it's a, a burden. For the right party, it's an opportunity. And the, and the goal is to find the right matchup of interests and opportunities. And you don't, you're not gonna get there using a, a city employee, and, you know, I, and you, we can, we can put all the ribbons and bell bells and all that out, we want, hang on it, but the incentives are off. And, uh, so I really think the long term is to find the right party. Could it be done at a, at a rental rate or whatever that we're happy with, I don't know. But I'm amazed that, uh, if this was broadly advertised, and if it was just the Anoka County paper, maybe it's, needs to be more broadly advertised. But, uh, I, I just, you know, I'm hard-pressed to believe nobody can see this as an opportunity, given what it used to be.
Which you alluded to.
In terms of not only the ice time, but the alternative uses of the facility too. Trade shows, gun shows, oh my gosh, you know, and all that kinda stuff.
There, there's a rave there too once.
Huh?
There was a rave there.
A rave, oh.
Yeah.
I know.
But anyway, that was my only point, you know, all the baloney about it notwithstanding. But it was just that the, the, I don't, I don't see how this is the proper solution. I believe the facility should be there, I believe there's a demand for the ice time, and I think we need to find somebody to operate who is not just a city employee taking on additional work. God knows Nate Ashford is maxed. I mean, we, it'd be great to clone him, and, you know, but, uh, I mean, the, the guy has a, an enormous amount of responsibilities it is. You know, he doesn't need, doesn't need more put on the plate, in my, just my opinion.
Yeah, if I, Mr. Mayor, if I could say, I think, I think, um, Nate somewhat sees the writing on the wall as well, and he's willing to step up and take one for the team, maybe, in the short term.
Yeah, he's always, he's always willing to step up, that.
Um, so we wanna thank him for that, but.
Yeah.
It's, um, certainly if, if someone approaches us and says, hey, we'd love to buy that facility from you, you know.
Well, has it been packaged that way? Has it, cuz when you advertise it, you're packaging. Has it been packaged as that kind of an opportunity, or is it just like, we don't really wanna do it, but we need somebody to manage this thing for us? I mean, you know, that, and I, I have, I don't know, I never saw the ads, I don't, you know, I don't know.
Be careful what you say.
One thing to consider, and, and I don't know if that's been brought up in any of the conversations, is we do have a long-term lease on the cell phone tower that's on that property, so I don't know who would then take over the revenue that's coming in from the cell phone tower, or if that's even a consideration.
That's easy to break, break that out from the business, yeah.
That's getting really off, not off-topic, but really in-depth then. So, but.
I just gotta believe there's somebody who could see this as an opportunity.
If we wanna have this as a, uh, agenda item at a, a future meeting, we could definitely talk over any possibilities.
Well, get any players that are interested to come in, and not many hockey players, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, that was the question I wrote down about this topic, is does it need to be RFP'd again, does it need to be advertised? Given the dollars involved and the size of the opportunity, uh, size of the, you know, business, whatever you wanna call it, operation, spending a few dollars, again, not taking more out of current staff, but just, yeah, hire a consultant for two, three, five thousand dollars and have them market the property. Commercial properties are marketed, they're not just thrown on a, on a board and say, oh, it's available. No, they're marketed, they're, they're packaged and they're sold, you know? And maybe that's what we need to do with this, it needs to be sold properly, and that's not our current staff's function is to do that.
I just, uh, bring in one of our staff people to do it, they appreciate the offer, but I, I don't know. That's a lot, that's a lot of responsibility.
They got enough to do, running this city, you know? That's a, that's a, that's a different deal, it's a different deal. Anyway, I'm not gonna go on all night, but it's late enough already.
That being said, I may have moved to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's made to adjourn and motion seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none heard.